She'll be, she'll be here. She had to run back to her office. You ready? Okay. All right. Welcome, everybody, to Thursday, May 5th, Town Council Bowling Green Meeting. I'd like to call it to order. We do have a quorum tonight. And if I can get everybody to follow me, stand and face a flag and follow my pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance and to the flag for the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the very soul of liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are waiting on the town manager to get back. She had run down to her office real quick, but... All right, let's move on to that then. We'll skip down to consent agendas. Items number eight, nine, and 10. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agendas as they are? On which one do you want to?
Okay, if you have a question, you have to pull that item off. And then...
Tab 8.
So you're going to pull the bills off of the consent agenda?
All right, so we have a motion for...
She, she just requested to pull it off. That's fine.
Right, I got that.
So then the motion would be...
Do I have a, a motion to accept consent agenda items nine and 10 as they are?
Make that motion?
All right, I got a motion by Ms. Gaines.
Question on the minutes for the April 7th meeting?
Okay, so are you asking to pull item 10 then also?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so items eight and 10 have been pulled.
All right. Item number nine, do I have a motion to accept item nine?
Hold, I'm sorry. Ms. Davis, did you mean the April 7th council work session or council meeting or both?
Council meeting.
Okay. So you have a motion. Is there a second?
For which one?
Number nine.
To approve the consent agenda number nine.
No, I've got a question on number nine.
Oh, man.
All right.
All right, let's just go back to the beginning. We'll come back to all this. I thought we were going to... Allison has now returned. We have three public hearings tonight for rezonings. The first one is RZS 2021-025 Northview. Do I have a staff member or representative in Northview who would like to speak? At this time, this is your time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Members of council, this is for a rezoning for Fairmont Land LLC. It is, they're requesting... I'm sorry, we're on Northview.
Northview. Did I say Fairmont? Oh, okay.
I did. Okay. It's for Northview LLC. And it is for 34.54 acres, going from B1 business to R3 residential. It's to develop a residential subdivision with commercial along the front of AP Hill Boulevard, 72 single-family houses and 35 townhouse dwellings. And it has a resulting density of 3.1 units per acre. It's at the intersection of Route 301 to the west and Lakewood Road to the north. Proffers have been submitted and signed. Proffers are in your packet. There are several items in the staff report. I've included comprehensive plan excerpts for council review. There was not a traffic impact analysis submitted. The water and sewer, we have a capacity permitted of 250,000 gallons for sewer. And so there's capacity left for the project for water. We have an additional, we have a capacity of about 153,000 gallons per day. It's an additional 124 connections at 300 gallons per day. And if there's any questions, I can either answer them now or I can wait until after the applicant gives a presentation.
Don't hear Benny.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we have a DEQ representative coming?
DEQ is coming in June. They were able to finally set a date and it's at the June town council meeting.
I think, I think they got back with us on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
I would foresee us having more questions after the applicant speaks, so just hold till then.
Thank you.
What was that? Sorry, Jeff.
The applicant speaking is probably going to promote some more questions, so we may as well wait for questions till after.
Okay. Does anybody, representative from Northview, would you like to speak at this time before I get into the public hearing?
Can you hit the button on that mic in front of you? Thanks.
The specifics of the presentation, I was going to wait until after DEQ spoke because it was my understanding that a lot of people's main questions had to do with the water supply. So it made sense to us to wait until DEQ presents so that we could go from there.
With deferral?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now...
Open the public hearing and close the public hearing. And then we'll have a motion at the request of the applicant to defer until June.
All right. I'd like to now open public hearing for RZS 2021-025 Northview. Does anybody wish to speak on behalf of Northview or however? If you do, please come up, state your name, your address. Anyone at all?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. And I would just like to express my opposition to the Northview project. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, before you close the public comment, if I may, because you're about to close the public comment, I was wondering if there was anything that the applicant might want to say during that time because there won't be further public comment on this item at the next meeting when other items would be out.
You can, the applicant will be allowed to speak next month.
Yes.
Well, I mean, anything that, if, if, like, give some thought that if there's anything that you'd want the public to know between now and then, I just wanted to put that in, in, in there if he did have anything. If not, that's fine, but I just, before he closed the public comment period, I wanted to say that.
Yes. All right. All right, here, no, seeing nobody.
Let me ask, I guess in the past, we've continued public hearings. So are we not allowed to continue that to the next meeting or?
And if you want to.
Is there anyone that's opposed to continuing the public hearing? That way we don't have to advertise and it's just continued since...
Well, we don't have to advertise it anyhow. We can close it and we're going to defer it till next month. And then that time, we can then bring it back up. He can come back up and speak after. After we hear DEQ, we'll bring the matter back up. And if council wishes to vote on it, then we can vote on it then. Mr. Manns could talk also.
It's fine to either close or leave the public hearing open. It's council's pleasure.
Just the public wouldn't be able to speak at the next meeting in regards to this rezoning.
No, not yet. I'm about to.
I did not. I was trying to get the consensus of town council if you wanted to.
So, hearing none, seeing none, I close public hearing. Now until the next public hearing rezoning.
Now, at, at, at the request of the applicant, I will make the motion to defer this item to the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion to defer.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Deborah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right, all in favor. All right, now moving on to the second rezoning. RZS 2021-20 for Fairmont. Staff, like to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the applicant's requesting to rezone six parcels that totaled 19.47 acres from B1 business to R3 residential. It is a conditional rezoning, meaning it has proffers. Proffers are signed and are at your tables. Again, conference plan excerpts are included in your packet. And issues that arose at the planning commission meetings and previous town council meetings are also in your packet, added as, as minutes. And so at this point, if there's any questions, specific questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer them or wait until after the applicant presents.
All right, would the applicant like to come up?
Good evening. My name is Dan Webb. You know, a couple of things I'd like to point out that we've modified with the application since our last submission. I think you may have had it last meeting, but I don't know that I talked about the items. The one we are providing a 24-foot, we added a 24-foot buffer along the entire frontage of Route 301. In addition to the 24-foot buffer, in that 24-foot buffer, we're going to be planting a double row of opaque evergreens to help with screening. So that's going to be an additional screening to help shield the rear yards from 301. You know, we defined kind of what our amenity package is going to be with the children's playground, pavilion that's 28 feet, 24 feet. And, you know, we want the ability to relocate those as we go through, you know, just within the same common area as we go through and do the detailed design. And the other big item that we added was a secondary emergency access that's going to line across from the existing crossover. So in whatever, for whatever reason, emergency vehicles are not able to access the primary entrance. There is going to be that secondary entrance that they can utilize. We've also proffered that we're going to, you know, the HOA documents are going to be submitted to the town for review and approval. And the site lighting is going to be downward reflecting as to not impact the operations at AP Hill. And other than that, that's really all that I wanted to add. There was talk about DEQ. I did contact DEQ and I ended up talking to Joseph Crest, who is in charge of the program. And as Allison, town manager, said that, you know, I think they are going to be here next month to help us understand what we have and how we're able to expand. And I explained to him that, you know, the town is contemplating somewhere around potentially 200 additional residential units. And, you know, looking at our capacity and with that potential growth, you know, what do we need to do to expand the permit and to expand additional well capacity? And so he was grateful that we gave him a little heads up and that we're, the town is trying to plan ahead before approving everything. And so he seemed like he was going to be well-prepared to answer any questions that we had. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
One thing I don't see on here, Dan, that was, that was on the other one is something to do with helping out the water situation. Like a, either a well, site, money, I mean, it was on, it was on the one prior to this one.
I, I, I agree. And last time in consultation with the town manager and town attorney, and I may have misunderstood, but, you know, what we have, what the proffer reads and you may want to chime in. Our initial offer was to provide $50,000 to go towards the construction of a well. And now the way that it reads is we're going to be responsible for instantly installing all infrastructure that may be required. And my understanding was that, you know, if a well is required, then we will have to help contribute towards that. I'm willing to, to change that proffer to make everyone feel comfortable. But after the last time we discussed, I thought that was the last thing. But I'm still, you know, I provided two sets last time, kind of one that had the 50 and then one that read this way. And so I, I'm willing to, to do whatever we need to do. And maybe I need to consult with staff again to, I may have misunderstood the way that it should have been worded.
We are talking about a proffer. And I'm not, I'm not comfortable really interpreting your proffer just because it's a proffer. Perhaps a way to address that would be to also defer until June when DEQ comes. And maybe that would help to resolve that issue?
I, I think that it would. I'd hope they were, I, my intention was to try to get them here tonight and they just couldn't make it.
Yes.
But I, I agree. I think once DEQ comes, we will have a lot more clarity on, you know, where we stand and where we need to go. And, you know, in, in light of that, I would request that we extend my public hearing until we have the DEQ meeting. I don't know if I can do that or not, but it would be my preference to, to not close this public hearing, but, but to extend it just in case we need to make some proper modifications.
And so the request is to keep the public hearing open and also to defer it until June?
Yes.
All right, anybody got any questions for Dan?
I just have one. If you can explain to me, because I'm just confused on this. So the buffer portion, 24-foot, that's on the 301 area.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you bring the utilities across from Broadus, that area down, utility lines, is there any frontage for drip line? I mean, you'd have to get rid of more trees for that. Is that correct?
No, I, I don't think we're going to impact that area with any, any utilities, any water sewer.
Electrical lines are underground or on the...
No, it's all going to be underground, but all of that will be along the street. In that buffer that we're, all of the utility lines that we will, you know, electric, telephone, cable, water sewer, they will be all along our interior street that we're constructing. And they will not be along 301. So, yeah, we don't want to, you know, if we have a buffer there, we're not going to put anything else within that buffer. But the, you know, yes. So hopefully that, that answers it. But... Mark, trying to get back to that water sewer proffer, I was not trying to eliminate anything that we have done before.
No, I understand. That's why I was a little confused and, you know, and, but appreciate you clarifying that. And, yeah, like I said, because now we got DEQ, we got confirmation on Monday.
Oh, good, okay.
It would be good, you know, that way we can all get some good education on it. So we know what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one. And we have a telephone. Okay. Under amenities on the, the proffers here, probably my favorite aspect of the whole development, the, the nature trail. You know, although it's proffered here, I still don't have any kind of guarantee that you would be able to do it through VDOT in any kind of written format. Is that something that you could get? You know, because the extension of that, that trail would be going through the VDOT right of way. So I, something that, you know, council would be very interested in is, because VDOT could say no.
Yeah, so, I mean, there are two trails. One's the nature trail that we're running through our common area. And you're talking about the paved 10-foot multi-use trail that we're connecting to the sidewalk at Lakewood.
Different names, yes. That, that's the one I mean, yeah.
And, and so, I mean, we don't have anything specific that says we can do it other than it is part of our GDP that was submitted to VDOT. And I had specific discussions with the VDOT representatives and they never, you know, there was only a thumbs up that yes, but, you know, all of those things are, you know, until you get down to the details and comments, but they didn't provide any input. They didn't say anything that we could not. It was all positive. So typically, whenever we propose anything within the VDOT right of way, if they feel as though it does not meet the requirements, they will let us know that, let the town know that. That's the reason that this was submitted to them. So they didn't say yes specifically, but with the comment letter and the review, they did not say we could not do it. Just like they didn't say we couldn't do the turn lanes, all, you know, that, that we're proposing. So I don't envision there being any issue. And I do view that as a very important component of our connection, you know, to the rest of town.
Yeah, no, it's, it's very important. It's a aspect we've been talking about for a long time, even before the development was around.
So I, I don't anticipate any issues because they have reviewed it.
On, on one hand, I totally, you know, believe that, of course, and, you know. But at the same time, that thing would get a lot of traffic. And so I could see a world where VDOT doesn't want the liability of people walking on it. And there's also the question of who would maintain it and everything. So if there is any way you could get any more of a written confirmation from them, that'd be great.
I'll, I'll look into it between now and the next meeting.
Cool. That's about it.
My apologies. I had just one other question. On the HOA documents, is there a stipulation that can be put that the homeowner cannot rent their house for a minimum of three years?
You're saying once it, once it is constructed, there will not be, it will not be a rental unit for three years?
Right. Once the homeowner moves in, buys his house, he cannot rent that for a minimum of three years.
Is that just the very first homeowner or is that any homeowner?
Any homeowner. It's, I just think it's an added protection so we don't become rental city.
I can certainly, we'll certainly consider that. I don't know if we are legally able to do that or not. I've just not had any, just not had any experience with it.
One else before I open the public hearing? All right. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, I would like to now officially open the public hearing for RZS 2021-020 for Fairmont. Public hearing is now open. If anybody wishes to speak, please come up. Your name and your address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. Just like to express once again my opposition to this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we've been asked to keep the public hearing open and defer it till June 2nd. Do I have a motion?
Sure. At the request of the applicant, I will make the motion to continue the public hearing and defer this item to the next meeting.
All right, do I have a second? Got a second by Arthur. All in favor, say aye.
One note, one, one note. I, I do hope that this is the last time that we defer this one. Because this has been on here a long time.
Do I, all in favor, say aye? Opposed, nay? Hearing none, passes?
Mr. Mayor, may I add something before we go on to the next agenda item? I just want to make sure that it's understood by council that the DEQ issue is not the only issue that I believe is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. It is in the staff report, my concerns, and there's, it's all stated in there. But I just want to make sure that it's understood that just because we, we have DEQ here, there's other land use issues that are inconsistent. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions about that now or in the future. The, these applicants know what I believe is a problem. And I'd be happy to set up meetings with them again and go over it. But I just don't want to get to next month or the month after and for anybody to say that it wasn't brought up. It is posted online publicly what the, what the staff report says. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number three. Rezoning, public hearing for RZS 2022-008, JPM Industries, East Broadus Avenue. Does staff have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a rezoning for approximately 2.29 acres. There is no plat and it didn't say on the deed the exact acreage. But it is zoned B1 business. And the proposal is for it to be R1 residential. The structures appear to have been built as dwellings. And at one point, it was probably zoned residential. We don't have a record. And so, but it was used as a State Farm insurance building and an office. And zoning at some point, it changed to commercial. So there is an accessory structure that contains a garage area with an apartment that's been continuously rented as a residence on the second story. The accessory structure has maintained its non-conforming use rights, unlike the principal structure, which was used as a State Farm building. And so the, the request is to go to, back to residential at this point. It is located on a, it is located on one of our business corridors. However, it is on, at the intersection of Travis Street and East Broadus Avenue. Once you cross over Travis Street, the, from Travis Street to AP Hill Boulevard, that is clearly commercial and it's well-established. But on, on the side of Travis Street that this rezoning is occurring, it is, the uses are still residential, except for when the, it was used as an insurance office. So although because our comprehensive plan shows those few parcels, those four parcels as, as commercial on the comprehensive plan, staff follows the comprehensive plan. So staff's recommendation would be, would be denial. Although saying that, I, I can clearly see that there could be a transition from the existing residential to, to commercial uses. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And now or as we go through the public hearing process. Thank you.
Thank you. JPM, have a representative here who would like to speak?
Hello, Ginn. This particular parcel is specific, I guess. It's not quite as big as the other ones we spoke about tonight. This is a house that my grandfather built and I lived there when I was little. My dad sold it to Mike Alsop and he wanted to open the State Farm office there. So they changed the zoning to commercial to allow for that use. But it's clearly a home and has been since it was built. Even when State Farm was in there, they still rented the downstairs. And so I have a contract for the three additional lots. It's been four separate lots since it was built. And I have a contract on the other three lots to sell them. It, it is 1031 exchange, so the buyer... It, it is 1031 exchange, so the buyer is, you know, somewhat, time is of the essence. But stipulated in the contract is that I get the zoning changed back from commercial to residential so that they can build homes. And the buyer's plan is to donate those homes to Habitat for Humanity. And they have a representative here to answer any questions or speak to the specific uses of those lots. If you would like to ask him any questions.
Anybody like to ask any questions?
You have any questions for me?
Before we get into public hearing?
I got a quick one. The next lot over to the west, what's that one's current zoning?
C2, or B2. You're talking about to the intersection, towards the intersection of?
Not, not to the west.
No, to the west, away from Travis. And the zoning in, on that is commercial. However, it is being used as residential and it's continuously been used as residential.
Okay.
Yeah, and similarly to this project or similar to this property, there, from Travis Street to Main Street is only homes. From Travis Street in the other direction is only commercial. So Travis, to me, makes sense as a dividing line between residential and commercial. And I think for any real commercial use on those lots, to encompass the other three lots, you'd really have to tear the house down in the middle and build something bigger, which for my purposes, doesn't really make any sense financially to tear down a, a good home.
I just have a couple of things. I just want to make sure that the stipulations planning commission requested or adhered to, especially in regard to stormwater. The slope in down Travis to Oak Ridge, we just want to make sure that's adhered to. That I assume you're still working on your special use permit that you need to get for the house?
For the current house?
For the rental, which is a rental now?
It was my understanding that a special use permit would be needed to convert the upstairs into a separate apartment. If I wanted it to be a dual family property.
You're not doing that then?
Not at the moment. I mean, when we decide to do that construction, we'll go through this process and, and ask for permission. But at the moment, we're not planning on doing that.
And then there is again, only one house per lot and there will be no subdivision on any of that?
Correct. And as for the stormwater, I can let Jason talk about that.
Okay.
Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna, excuse me, but you were having a presentation, you or Habitat? Is that correct? Okay, go ahead. Sorry, because I had questions for now.
Hello, yes, thank you for your time and, and opportunity to, to answer any questions you have tonight. Definitely, we have noted that there is stormwater, things that we need to take care of. I've actually reached out to Friends of the Rappahannock. And we will be doing several things to mitigate any stormwater. The first is, I shared the other night at the, the planning commission, we will be installing subterranean rain gardens through a grant program that Friends of the Rappahannock has that will take care of all of the water that will come off of the house. So that will, you know, take care of most issues. But we also will be grading the lot appropriately, shaving about five feet of depth off the top of that whole parcel to kind of get the topography more favorable to building, but also to make sure that the water is, is going where we want it to go. And then also Friends of the Rappahannock will be advising us on other things that we can do as far as with, you know, different types of plants. And we've even looked at different types of grasses and things like that that will, we think, solve all the problems and, and show that you can use a lot of very green techniques to really kind of address some of these issues so that we don't have to, you know, disturb too much of, of the area.
Hi. Can you tell us a little bit about the market value of what you're, what you would build on these lots?
Sure, yes. They're single-family homes. And we, we will make sure that they fit in with the appropriate neighborhood with, you know, shake design on the, the gable ends and various things like that. But we also are going to make sure that we protect the value for the surrounding homes by, you know, we sell the homes at cost, but what we will do is put a silent second mortgage on the homes so that when you look on public records, the home will look as if it was sold for what it appraised for. But in reality, they only pay for the cost in construction of the home. So that makes sure that, that the neighborhoods aren't impacted, you know, by any kind of skewing because of somebody getting a home so dramatically underneath, you know, market value. We also will have decided to put a three-year period where they cannot sell the home. If they do, all of the equity from, from what the cost of the home was that we sold it to them for to what it appraises for would come back to Habitat for Humanity. So that if, you know, they did need to sell it, we could use that to put another workforce family in there so that, you know, a teacher, a firefighter, you know, somebody that serves in our community would have the opportunity to buy that home. And we would use our equity stake to ensure that that home stays, is a workforce house for so many in our community that need affordable housing.
Define for me and for the council, the difference between workforce housing and subsidized housing?
Sure. Subsidized housing is more of a, you know, a program for folks who are usually at the poverty level. You know, or a senior citizen, you know, who's retired and can't afford much because of, of their, their income. Workforce housing is really more for folks who honestly are overlooked throughout, not just here, but throughout the whole nation. You know, teachers, firefighters, police, first responders, people that, you know, McDonald's managers, you know, folks who have a good income, but it's not enough to go to Bank of America or some other place and then buy a home, you know, like in Maury Heights or one of these other areas that the homes are so high. So typically, for our range, we, our kind of sweet spot is income that's between 60% and 80% of AMI. So like a teacher in Caroline starts at $40,800 a year. They're a perfect fit for our program. A family of four can make up the $72,500 and get in our program. Anything above that, then they really, if they're responsible, they should be able to go to a bank or some other place and, you know, get a market rate loan and buy a home from, you know, from a, a four-market builder. And so, so our starting income really is, you know, to give you the range, you got to make about $28,000 a year. So between $28,000 and $72,500 is kind of our, our market. Now, if you need a four-bedroom, $28,000 ain't going to do it. You're more like mid 30s, but historically, we've been able to build three-bedroom, two-bath homes for, you know, somebody that's, you know, close to 30.
Mr. Tickle?
Yes.
Or is it offered to single people?
We can't discriminate based off of, you know, a person's marital status. So as long as they have the stable income and the credit score and the credit to demonstrate it, we, we build for both. Historically, most of the time, it's usually families. I've never had any single people that have applied. But that's not to say if they applied, you know, that they couldn't get in the program. But historically, for some people, just think that you have to have a family to get in these homes. But that is not the case.
So you did state that they had to have good credit, stable job, and, and well, income up to, you know, starting at 25 and up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you don't take people who have bad credit come in there? They had proven for what, a, a year on, on their credit? I mean, what, how does that work?
So they, they can't?
I'm just trying to give them a good idea on, on the type of people that you, that, that come to you.
Absolutely. So we're also a loan packager, so I'm going to give you the whole little two-minute elevator speed. So you can get the same loan that we get and many of, of the people in this community would qualify it. It's USDA 502 direct loan. So ideally, your credit score is 640 or above. However, they do understand things happen. So they're a little bit more flexible than a traditional bank. However, you have to have 12 months of where you've had no late payments, no bankruptcies the prior 36 months. You have to be current on all of your government obligations, including taxes and student loans, because the loan is directly from the USDA. So if you owe them money and you're delinquent or anything else, they won't lend you anymore. And you do have to have, the biggest thing is the stable and dependable income. You, you do have to have a history of always making a certain amount of money per year. Since COVID, they've, they used to, you know, pre-COVID, they, they really wanted you to have the same job for two years. But they did kind of loosen that a little bit. Now it's more about income. So like if, for example, you worked at Walgreens and then you went to Walmart, you know, they would be okay with that as long as the income level is the same. Now, if you were making 35 and you dropped down to 19 and then went back, you know, then they might have some questions. But ideally, they want two years of consistent income that would meet the threshold to afford the loan.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one. I, I think I missed it. Do you have a potential or do you already have a contingent contract on the property to, to do this project?
We, we have a, a contract. We have some donors that are doing a 1031 exchange. And assuming this goes well, they'll purchase the, close on the property May 20th. And then two or three days later, it's followed up with a donation to us.
All right, great.
What prevents them to sublet their, their property?
The USDA does not allow you to do that. It cannot be a, a income-bearing property. So it has to be owner-occupied. And they do, I guess I should mention this. They do look at their tax returns every year to make sure that, you know, their property is being used for the right purposes and things like that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I want to just say that through the Habitat of Humanity, just because they get a house maybe at half-cost, it's really not at half-cost. They themselves, the people that are going to be buying it and going in that home, have to put in so many sweat, sweat equity hours to be able to do that. If they cannot physically be there during that time to do it, they have to have a surrogate there helping them with the labor. They have to donate, correct me, Jason, I'm not sure how many hours, but there's a lot of hours.
30 hours a week.
Put in to build their own home. They just are paying for the cost of the product.
Yeah, that's correct.
And we had somebody here tonight that spoke to us that is a benefit of one of that, and I think it's great.
Yeah, each household does have to put 30 hours of sweat equity in. If they don't meet that obligation, then they are removed from the program. But we do let them have a surrogate. So if you're a single mom, you can have two surrogates. If you're a married couple, you can have one. If you're fully disabled, you can have three. But the idea is we have at least three able-bodied adults part of that construction team. So essentially, for every five homes we build, Mac has 15 people that he knows has to put in 150 hours per week. So that's his labor force. And then, of course, the community supplements that as well by coming out and volunteering.
Very good. Anybody have anything before we open up public, public comments? Thank you, Mr. Tickle. Appreciate it. All right, I would now like to open public hearing, RZS 2022-008 for JPM Investments on East Broadus Avenue. It is now open. If anybody would like to speak, please come up, state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Mike Williams. I'm 1A Dickerson Drive, Bowling Green, Virginia. I'm the Director of Building Operations for Habitat of Caroline. There's one thing that I would like to note about the houses. We have taken this year, last six months to design a product for those three lots that should be industry-leading. We are planning to do a zero-entry condition crawl space. It is billed as a high-performance Energy Star home. Now, high-performance Energy Star, with the Energy Star program, the heating units and the ductwork has to be within the conditioned area of the house. So by putting these houses on conditioned crawl spaces, we're able to put the units in the crawl space and meet the Energy Star program. However, the house is being designed so tightly wrapped and secure from any kind of infiltration from air or moisture. They require to have a new product out that's called ERV, which stands for Energy Recovery Ventilator. And so we partner with Bronn. Bronn has a product out now that is leading the industry in this area. Most of the builders are not aware of the type of condition that's required for the new homes as airtight as they are. So we were real fortunate to come up with a design that's pretty much an industry leader in these homes. I stand that. It'll, additionally, good. Are further savings on their property. So these are not just, they're going to be 1400 square feet, three-bedroom, two baths. And they are set up for homes to be ADA adaptable. And so we put a brand-new models out there. We think it's going to be very much a product for the industry to take a look at and as far as the energy savings and everything is concerned. Anybody have any questions? I know someone questioned about the size of the houses. But by the homeowners coming together and working and saving this wet equity, also Habitat is an international organization, is a Christian organization. And so we have large partners in these, these homes. Whirlpool gives us all the appliances. We have Vaspar to reach out to give us paint for most of the houses. Local businesses like Luckstone, in the last two years, have given us 500 ton of stone. We have local merchants that match or give us prices below the, the high-box store prices. So because of our partnership, we are able to put more quality into the homes. Our cabinets that are being put in are just top of the line as a Christian organization in Fredericksburg that's donating their labor costs so we can put more quality of cabinets. And so these are not low-income homes. These are affordable homes for workforce people. Anybody have any questions about what the houses may look like?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to speak? Come on up, state your name and address. All right, hear none, see you none. Last call. All right, officially close public hearing, RZS 2022-008. All right, I'd like to bring this up to?
You looking for a motion before discussion?
I'd like to have a motion of some sort.
All right, well, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the rezoning.
All right, I got a motion by Jeff. Do I have a second? Second by Randy. Rob call.
We've got discussion.
I'm sorry, discussion, excuse me. I get ahead of myself. Arthur, you got a question?
Question for the town manager. Page 120, I think that was your staff report. I just wanted some clarification on, it said that the lot area will determine required connection to the utility system and that the plat has not been submitted to assist with this determination. And then I'm getting, I'm under the impression that maybe page one twenty six is from the planning commission. Is that notes that they gave? I don't have a title on the top, but, um.
Uh, page one twenty six came from the applicant.
Came from that. Okay, so number five, it says the three lots have an easement for water and sewer hookup that was placed there with these lots of mine. So if there's an easement, why, where's the plat? I guess that we show that.
Some parcels don't have flats and this is, these are examples of just older parcels that, that don't have flats.
Okay.
They will need flats in order to build the houses, uh, because I need to check setbacks and, um, different code requirements. But, uh, right now, they don't really need one for, uh, rezoning unless, uh, town council feels differently. Um, so the, what you asked about the, um, the connections to the utilities, you can have a, uh, if the lot is too small, then you, you can have different sized lots for different types of connections. So if you have, if you're connected to both water and sewer, then the lot size can be a lot smaller than if you're connected to just one or the other. And then if you're connected to none. The, um, sewer, the water, there is a water line there. Sewer is within a hundred and fifty feet. So they will be required to connect. Um, and I'm just not sure of the size, but based on the Caroline County GIS, which is not a plat, but it appears that the lots are large enough, but anyway.
Okay, I, that was.
Yeah, the size is okay. In other words.
Understood. And then I guess the only other comment I had is we kind of had the same style of rezoning about six months ago. I know you weren't on council, but we had a commercial move back to it. It's the only thing I have.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got a few things. Yeah. Um, I wanted to, I, I got a few. Um, first I wanted to talk about some of the, the land use history because, you know, we were redoing those land use maps a couple of years ago. And, and this was a, a site that was looked at at that time. Um, it did go through those kind of iterations way back, like, you know, it's, it's been residential a long time. It changed, changed, changed. Um, at the time when the future land use map was put together, it was left the way that it was at the time just to acknowledge the capability of growth. Uh, but there, there honestly was discussion at the time and it was even considered then that the aspect of, of a potential rezoning in the future to residential would be all right, uh, for that area to the west of, uh, Travis. And that's actually in line with, you know, several factors. Um, you know, well, Mr. Mayor, you would know that's kind of like a little historical area on that north side. So by putting smart residential in there, that, that protects the image of, of that section of Broadus. And that's something that is reflected in the comp plan to do is, is to reflect the, uh, identity of that area. Um, so I, I do think it is in line with, with some of the ideas of the vision of out there, as, as long as we don't go too far. You know, on, on that east side, we, we do need to maintain that. Um, also touching on some of the things that are going to be coming up at our next meeting, the, the water cap is somewhat irrelevant for this discussion because these lots are already identified lots. So they kind of already have their hand in the pool for the water that's allocated to them. Um, again, going back to the maintenance of like the historic character, this, this also, it's why I asked about the contingent contract because, you know, with that, we really can talk about the, the, the person behind this. Uh, otherwise Habitat would really not have a bearing because they wouldn't be the ones developing, but they have that contract. So we can. Uh, that rental protection of that three year thing really helps the, the character, the description of these buildings, single family homes. It's, it's really in line with the stuff that's already over there. So it's, it's looking pretty good.
Mr. Mayor, may I add something to those comments? The comprehensive plan does show that area, those particular parcels as commercial uh, for future land use, which is why I made the comment I made during my staff report. Um, for legal reasons, it's best to have it consistent with the comprehensive plan. And some attorneys even require a comp plan amendment to run along with a rezoning. Um, if it is consistent, if it is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. What I can do in this case, because they needed a quick answer for their financing, is, uh, I can, uh, just bring back a comp plan amendment. Uh, if council decides to approve this, um, I can bring a comp plan amendment back uh, at the next meeting or shortly thereafter. And, uh, so we can be, so we, it can be in line with the comprehensive plan. So I can do it immediately.
Let, let's please do that.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. But at the same time you do that, the partial just to the west of that is B two. Uh, and when I moved back here in nineteen seventy, we lived in that house at the back of that. And it used to be the old chicken hatchery back there. Well, when we moved here back in seventy, both houses were residential. So don't know how it got converted over to B two or what, but you know, there's people living on B two property right next beside it. So we ought to look at maybe putting that on the comp plan also as a future use. You know, so we don't run across the same problem down the road on that piece. As well. But anyhow, um, anybody else have anything before we call for vote? All right, go for a roll call. Gene? Jeff?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Randall? Arthur?
Yes.
All right, vote passage unanimous. All right, rezoning is done. Now moving on. Uh, I'd like to take this time to open up public comments. Uh, if anybody has anything for public comments, since we don't have any delegations, uh, please come up, state your name and address and tell us what's on your mind.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, my name is Brian Lomaduke and I'm the president next door at Bowling Green Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, reason I had come was, uh, I guess a couple of weeks ago, we were renting the hall here and did not realize that the prices had gone up on the hall as such to, um, nonprofit organizations. Um, we feel like it's a little bit unfair as to how that was hit and, uh, obviously y'all don't come to somebody like us to ask us anything, but it, you know, it would have been nice if somebody would have at least mentioned. But that being said, we're here for another reason. Um, one of our, one of our members come last, uh, month and they said it would probably be easier for y'all to give us a donation or up the donation to us than it would to give us the hall cheaper after y'all have already passed it. So I guess we're at that point. Uh, we're here to actually ask for an upgrade in the amount of money that what town gives us. We're giving a thousand dollars every year to operate on. And we also have fifteen thousand, which is a pass through money for fire programs. Uh, just to let y'all know, as of our last meeting, uh, and it was voted on. As of now, we've kind of taken on another organization. We have merged or call it merged, the rescue squad, volunteer rescue squad now has become part of our organization. After the next year and a half, there will no longer be an organization. So we're now kind of one big happy family. Uh, most of the rescue calls at that point will be answered by Caroline County, but supplemented by Bowling Green Fire Department with the, uh, with what we have as far as, uh, volunteers go. So I guess where we're at on this thing is I understand y'all give them a thousand as it's operating right now and us a thousand, which would make it for two total, because I guess that money will end up coming back to us. As we go forward, we would like to see y'all upgrade that to five thousand dollars a year, if that's all possible. Um, I understand y'all are strapped and we're strapped and we're a non, nonprofit organization. So, uh, if y'all can dig a little deeper, get down into some stuff or have some profers or some extra money somewhere to come up with, it would be great to do so. So that's kind of where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else care to address council?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Town Council. Thank you for letting me take time to speak and I thank you each for your service to the town of Bowling Green. My name is Justin Schenalt. I live at seventeen one zero nine Richmond Turnpike in Bowling Green, Virginia. And I am a, I don't know, twenty year member of the volunteer fire service. Um, I'm here mainly to speak after Brian. Um, I've held every role from deputy chief to lieutenant to firefighter, and I started out when I was about fourteen years old. Um, just recently in the last five years have I joined the Bowling Green Volunteer Fire Company. The Bowling Green Volunteer Fire Company operates a fleet of trucks that some are older than our members coming in the doors. On your worst day, when you're having your worst fears and either your house is on fire or you need emergency medical services, do you want to rely on something that is older than the people that are coming to rescue you? We put our blood, sweat and tears into what we volunteer for each day. There is a career staff of anywhere between four and five people next door. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but those four or five people aren't around very often. And us volunteers are left here to protect the town and the county on a daily basis. Just recently with the COVID funds that have came across most of counties and towns in the area, it leaves you with an opportunity to give back to us. Most volunteers next door have been directly affected by COVID, including myself, where we have caught it multiple times because of what we do. I didn't catch COVID because of work. I work in an office by myself. I didn't catch COVID from my kids or my wife because they don't leave the house very often. I know where I caught COVID from. It was from helping my neighbors in their worst time. We asked that you would look at whatever money is left from the COVID funds with the ability to help us replace some of our aging fleet. We're not asking for millions of dollars. We're not asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're asking for the ability of to maybe replace one of our oldest trucks, our utility truck. Our utility truck is a four door pickup truck that is the lifeline of the fire department. It removes us to trainings, it moves us to medical calls, and it moves us back and forth to emergency scenes. We're not asking for a certain dollar amount. We're just asking to look to see if there's ability for you to help us with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, second call. All right, closing public comments. And I can now move on to, uh, member comments. Does any council member like to comment on anything they heard tonight or anything they'd like to say?
You know, I will, but does anybody else? No? Okay, guess I'll go then. Uh, yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Schenalt and Brian. I didn't catch your last name, but President Lomaduke. Okay, all right. Thanks for coming out. Um, I, I did, uh, I, I am curious if you all, um, did happen to submit those requests through email or in any written capacity. I know I can go back and I can check the minutes later or the video, but I was just curious if you had. Okay. Sure, sure. I mean, you can always even, you know, you can, you can call me anytime. I actually live across from you, so you can knock on the door. Um, okay, going on, on from there. Um, I, you know, I want to repeat again, you know, my, my frustration over the deferrals of, of the public hearings. But, you know, I, I get when it's needed, it's needed. And I do want to respect the procedure of, you know, particularly when an applicant, uh, requests a deferral, you know, there, there's a certain onus to, to respect that. So hopefully we can come to some final decisions at the next meeting. Um, I, I wanted to thank the town manager for that, uh, basically the correction on the comp plan, uh, after the, the words I, I spoke a minute ago. And okay, uh, just to, to say some things that were going on, um, you know, I, I had the pleasure of opening out a lot with, uh, setting up the visitor center, really enjoyed how that's coming along. It's got a little ways to go still, but really enjoying having the other building have some activity going in and again. Yeah, really happy with that and looking forward to the future with it. Uh, we've been addressing and looking at a lot of things around here. I was even in here the other day. I was underneath that stage and uh, ju- just, just a little FYI, there are some, um, access points underneath that stage that go into the bottom of this floor. And there is a four foot crawl space that goes all the way to the back of the room. And it's four separate channels. You can get in each one and go spelunking. It's, it's really interesting. Um, also in setting up today, um, I was looking at the rack equipment and we could go back to the other wired mics and not have to worry about these batteries all the time. Um, all we would have to do is just take one device out of the other rack and put it in there. I'll, I'll talk with the town manager later about doing so, but that might get us away from having to, you know, when we have to go switch out mics halfway through the meeting because the batteries die. And then, then lastly, um, Mr. Mayor, we did need to amend the agenda regarding the budget. That's all I have.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we're gonna do business.
Okay, I just, I don't know if this is the time, but I have something. Um, are you done, Jeff? Okay. Um, do we not give planning commission reports? And why?
Uh, I started putting that on the agenda last month and it was, I accidentally left it off, but they do, they would like a time on the agenda to give a report. So you'll see that from now on.
Good, okay. And did they, with, with that being said, does that mean there is a representative that will be here from the planning commission as well or?
Many times in localities, it's the chair, but it can be any of the, the planning commissioners. Sometimes it's the liaison, but, um, it could be any of them.
Okay, because I think we need to do that. Um, and secondly, I didn't see anything in, in, if it's in our packet here, um, forgive me for asking, but playground updates, is that somewhere on, on our agenda tonight?
I hadn't heard that there's any updates that, that there was a meeting or anything like that, but, um, if, so I didn't think that there was any change in that, but I could be incorrect about that.
I can give you an update on that. Yeah. Josh has been in contact with a couple of people waiting on them to contact back us so we can set up meetings, get prices and so forth. And then, um, uh, I'm going to put together the three phase things for you, once we have some prices and what we're going to go on with that.
Because we were going to at least, um, I think add some mulch or something. Did we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'll add that to the agenda as a permanent thing until the project gets done. Maybe our performs as a permanent update for what's going on with those.
Okay. And I, I just want to say, you know, referring back to our fire and rescue teams that, you know, I do hope that we can, um, help them in some way. I think it's important that we take some responsibility there and, and try to figure out how we can help. Um, because I, I, I feel like with a growing area that we definitely need to, um, make sure that we're doing all that we can to support these folks, because I know it's, it's a hard thing. Um, and I, and I think the other piece too, that I don't see on our agenda, um, but I think we need to revisit. I know everybody's asking for a piece of the pie as far as, um, with the money that we are trying, that hopefully at some point we'll get to look at how to spend our COVID funds or the relief package that, you know, we were gifted with, um, is our sidewalks. And I'm stating that tonight because being in the town during the day, I see people with baby carriages now, and it's very interesting. I noticed a lot of runners that, and walkers, they walk in the middle of the road because they're concerned about i- if you're not watching your step, you do, you could fall. And anybody that walks regularly or runs regularly on the sidewalks knows that there's places and, and Tammy, I know you've done a lot of research on that. Um, but I even had a, a, a parent coming with a baby carriage the other day and she was saying that she walks her carriage on the streets because she said that when you're going over so many bumps in the sidewalks that should not be there. And she made the point and I didn't even reveal on my own council. I just kind of listened and she said, yeah, she said, um, that in, in the town of Bowling Green, anybody who walks on the sidewalks knows that it's just not safe. And she says, my baby's head is flopping all over the place. She had a newborn in the carriage. So I think that is something that we really still need to look at. I know it's VDOT's responsibility, but I think there are things that we can also, I don't think VDOT will care what we pay for on those lines. So I think it's something we need to talk about and have discussions. So I think it's something we need to talk about and have discussions about. That's, I think, all I have.
Mayor, I'm with, with Ron, and I've had somebody come to me too about the sidewalks in Bowling Green, Milford Street specifically. So I haven't walked it to see how bad it is, but, um, there is some places that are bad in it. And we probably need to either get VDOT to address it or see what we can do to, to alleviate the problem.
We'll look at it. Anybody else? Well, I do like to comment, uh, one thing that Deborah brought up about planning. Item number three, the rezoning, I don't think it got mentioned, but planning commission did unanimously forward it with their approval. Is that, is that correct, Valerie?
Yes.
So I don't think that was mentioned.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and the other thing is that handicap ramp that's on Main Street, VDOT fixed that, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And is it still holding down, Jeff? I mean, um, Jeff, Chief, it's still holding? Okay. All right, so that has been taken care of.
I, I got one thing, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Randy and the town staff for, um, and whoever else on town council worked to get the streetlight situation fixed, um, around Main Street and then inside streets. And if there's any more that are out, um, you know, let us know. Try to get in touch with Dominion to get those fixed. I know some of the photo cells on the top would cut on and cut off, um, continuously throughout the night hours.
All right, anybody else for me to move on to staff reports? All right, moving on to staff reports. Item four, Public Works Utilities. Anybody have any questions?
I got one.
All right.
So I understand, uh, Josh, for underwater.
Josh.
You've got the, the annual hydrant flushing is complete. And it was brought up in our last monthly meeting. I told them that I would ask about it, but I believe that the county intervened and deemed the hydrant out front of town hall unusable. And I know probably within the last twenty-four, thirty-six months, they replaced a lot of them around the town. So is that something that we could look at, maybe potentially getting fixed in the future? I know the individual that had marked it, I guess, um, out of service, and he is no longer with the county, but he's with Fire Rescue. So that's my understanding. It wasn't through Public Works.
Excuse me.
But you may know something about it.
Josh, if you can come up to the podium, I'd appreciate it.
Um, from my understanding, that fire hydrant was deemed not usable because they kept breaking it. That's why they put it out of use, so they would stop breaking it.
Okay.
So as in the fire department, that was the ones that, that was breaking it from what I've talked to with staff.
I can, I mean, if it's fine with you, I'll circle back to the county because it was a volunteer individual who's no longer in the capacity with the county. He was through, uh, Fire Admin who, I guess, took it out of service. So I can start there if that's fine with you and just see if they can work on getting it. Because we talked about it in our last meeting, we kind of like that hydrant to be usable in case there was ever an instance here. You know, if, if it's not, then we've got to find another hydrant, and it may cause a delay in response.
No, I understand. Like I said, from speaking with staff, I think it was deemed unusable because, I don't know if y'all are filling up trucks there, but the individual, I guess, that was using it was not using it correctly, and it kept breaking and costing the town money. So they just marked it, "Do not use."
Gotcha.
And I, I, so I think you can still use it.
For emergencies.
For emergencies, they just not the routine of filling up your truck and.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
No worries. I just wanted to relay that back next door. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Wish, I wish you would check into it. Because, you know, you get somebody who doesn't know, you know, if it doesn't get passed down right, and the next thing you know, out of service, got to find one somewhere else, and.
That's what we thought for the last two or three years. This predates, I think, when you came here.
Okay, we'll find out, and we can see what we can do to somebody, see if we can get it fixed. All right, uh, anybody else Public Works? If not, move on to the Police Department. Anybody got anything for the Chief? All right, moving on, Town Clerk Treasurers Council Monthly Report. About anything for the clerk, treasurer?
I'd just like to say congratulations on the first payroll run on the new system.
Hey! All right, invited for the town manager. Town manager, do you have anything you want to add, or you talked too much already?
I'd be happy to answer any question.
Okay.
Mayor, I got a, got something I want to bring up. Um, going back to the police report.
Okay.
Um, we talked about it tonight in the workshop meeting that we have a problem with a smelly partner. And we, I see we got animal control in here. Is it something we need to reach out to Justin about getting somebody to, the, find out about this skunk that lives underneath the building?
I talked to Allison about it, and maybe Chief can do something, but I think we're gonna have to get a, uh, a, a trained, uh, trapping wildlife guy to come out and do something, because you, you just can't go trapping wild animals.
That's correct.
Without permits, so.
The county, the county doesn't remove them either, so you would, you would probably have to have somebody professional come in to remove it.
Which will cost us a little bit.
It will.
Especially a skunk.
I, I, I know recently, um, someone in town had questions on removal of a skunk, and it was over a thousand dollars. So just something, I think.
Now, maybe I'm gonna, I'm gonna give that duty to you to check into it. Can you do that? See who you can round up, please? Yeah, we don't need to, and, and the thing about it, if somebody, if somebody made comment, well, let's just close it up under there. I said, how do you know it's not under there? Then it dies. Now you really got a stinking mess. We need to get rid of it. That's your job, Chief. I just gave you new job. All right, uh, now let's move on to the consent agendas. I know that. I got them all circled. I know, you know, we receive these things late, but in the future, when we can start getting them on time, let's try to call in to the office and talk to the people and get your questions answered that way. Uh, but, uh, consent agenda, item number eight, bills. I know somebody had comments, questions about that, please.
Yeah, I did. I just wanted, is this, um, something new, Jackie, or, so you usually get a register that has more information, so we kind of know what is what? So I just wasn't, I'm, I'm all about making things easy, but I just was confused.
No, I understand. The new AP is being run out of Keystone, so I'm learning reports. And this was an ad hoc report that I figured out how to do myself.
Cool. So I'm, I'm sure they have a way to give us, the only reason I ask is just if I look at this and I see cleaning services for twelve fifty is that for one month, two month, one event, two events, usually we know exactly.
So are you looking for invoice details?
Yeah, I guess that's.
Versus a summary?
If it's a lot of extra work, no, this would be fine for me, but I'm just.
Okay, so you want us to look for that tomorrow?
No, you can, next month, it doesn't, yeah, I'm fine with this now.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Local service, hundred and fifty-four dollars. What, what was that?
Oh, porta potties, playground.
A what?
Porta potties over here at the playground. Local Services provides porta potty services.
Is that monthly or what?
Monthly. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, can I have a motion to accept, uh, agenda number eight?
Yeah, so moved.
All right, motion by Jeff. Arthur, second. All in favor, say aye. All right, motion carries. Moving on to number nine, the minutes.
I can start on that one if you like.
Go ahead.
Page one forty-nine. Uh, it marks me as present. I was absent during that meeting. And then if we move to the next one, it has me absent at page one fifty-one. I was present. And then on page one fifty-three, it doesn't have me listed, and I was again present on that. Those are my three corrections.
All right, anything else on item number nine? All right, I have a motion to accept item number nine. Motion by Randy. Second by Jeff. All in favor, say aye. Posed, nay. Right here, none. Moving on to number ten. I think somebody sent questions about minutes. Okay.
What page, what page is? I think that the person that's doing the minutes thought many times the mayor votes automatically with council, and so I think she thought that, that that was, that occurred. So we'll, I'll make sure I correct that. Thank you. Yeah. Here, here they don't, but, um, but the person who's doing the minutes thought so, um, because most places, many places, the mayor votes as well. Yeah.
Technically, three, I think, one sixty-nine, at the very bottom, too.
So with the fact that all of those motions were unanimous motions, um, could I make a motion to accept the minutes with the correction that the motions that represent an in error eight votes are changed to seven?
I believe you can, yes. And the second by who? Arthur had seconded. All in favor, say aye. Posed, nay. Here, none. All right, we got two items left. We'll go ahead and do item eleven. Uh, to new business for Tensel Town. I know we had a, uh, we had him talk at the, uh, visit, our, uh, workshop before the meeting. Uh, now it's time for council to discuss an action.
I, I missed most of that discussion, but, um, I'm in favor of giving them an old cost because they do bring an awful lot of traffic to this town, not only during Tensel Town, but, um, through all the other events that's held by them.
And so just like, um, with any other charitable entity that might ask for a discount, the rates are what they are, but you can certainly then turn around and make a donation to that charity.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, I guess, in the, uh, reservation of town hall? Since one of those individuals that presented this evening had a business in the town, does that qualify them to have the town rate? I mean, I guess that's kind of like a area that is not.
Not, not as written.
I'm, I'll put it this way, just because you work in, you know, have property in town, but don't live in town, doesn't give you the same town rights because you can't run on council.
Well, if you have property, you're technically a citizen, so yes, if you have property, then you could.
Ma- mailing address, that, that's like, yeah, if you have property in Florida, but you live here, it doesn't mean that you can vote in Florida.
Yeah, and so, no, like if you own business, uh, commercial property in town, you don't live in town, you know, you're not a town citizen, per se, uh, as far as the point, for the voting in town or being able to run on council.
Just like to bring up the fact, what she said is how much they give to the food bank and that too. I mean, if they help the community quite a bit, I know we have a, a rule set. I understand what you said earlier. But when they're helping the community and they're bringing that kind of money or food to the food bank, which is actually what they'd actually have to pay extra for the rent of the hall, I don't know, they could just stop it and forget about it altogether.
Mr. Mayor, may I, it'll, it'll take me a minute, so I want to make it sure it's okay. Uh, all right, uh, when we set the rental rates, we had to have a public hearing. So we would have to either make a donation to this organization, as Andrea said, or we'd have to revise the rates again, which would require another public hearing, which would cost all the taxpayers to do so. And that would be in excess of what they're asking to be waived. We did give them an option, uh, because if, if it is true that they claim that they are doing this as a charitable organization, that they should construct themselves as a charitable organization. Um, that's not exactly at a cost to them to do that. I don't know all the particulars, and it does take a little bit of paperwork. However, that's paperwork that they, you know, could do, and then they could go on and do even more things, which, you know, might be very beneficial. It might be good in the future if, uh, we could work together with them to do that. But to be honest, if we were to work together with them in the future, they would need to be constructed correctly for us to do so, because that would be a problem for us as far as all that paperwork is considered. Um, I am amenable to wanting to work with them, and, you know, maybe we could discuss the idea of if they construct themselves correctly, uh, we could maybe give a donation to them that might even cover that, that disparity in, in the between.
Well, I, I'll tell you what, having done it myself, it takes about six months to, uh, to get a nonprofit status. And it can run you three, four, five thousand dollars, depending on how you go about it. It can even take you up to a year to get it. It depends on how it's written up to begin with, whether it gets rejected back, and then have to be redone again. So if you want to get it done right, you pay a nice attorney. A good attorney knows what they're doing, and that costs money. Uh, so, you know, I just, I don't see them doing that. I don't think they have the money.
If you want it done quickly, it costs, or it takes a really, really long time, then.
Yeah, so, I mean, a donation, what would it be?
It's about a four hundred dollar difference.
Huh?
It's about four hundred dollars.
Okay. All right.
Um, I, I would like to say something, so, um, I feel like people forget why we have rates here, and that's to maintain the building. Uh, I am totally supportive of what they do, and I appreciate that. And I'm a business owner, so for me to say this, I mean, I'm not thinking as a business person here. I'm thinking as a person of the community. I'm also thinking about as a person who appreciates this building and what it stands for. And I think if I were going to say that I was going to come in this building to make money for what I thought was important personally, and if I lived in this town, I'd like to think that you think donating money to keep this building up to where it needs to be is just as important as what your cause is. So I personally think, first off, we can't, there's no option for putting the rental out there cheaper to anyone. That's not an option. Everyone needs to understand that, because in the community, people talk, no, that's not an option. That's not legal to do. We do have an option as a donation. And I, and I think, again, we need to think about precedence as we said here, how do we decide what's important? We, if we're gonna do donation, I would like to see as donation for the fire department to do something. I think that's valuable. They're really not out to make money. And again, I, I appreciate what they do here on Tensel Town. It would be stupid for me as a business person to say, I don't appreciate that, or because it helps me, yes. But I'm looking at the big picture here, and I think when we're thinking about donations, we need to really think about who we're donating to, because we can't afford, we're, it's counterproductive for us to sit through hours of meetings, and they agonized over those rates for months. It was agonizing. And, and I think it was not a decision they came to lightly. So I appreciate the work they did with that, and I stand by the committee and us that, that made those decisions. And I think we just need to think long and hard about who we're going to donate to, because we can't make donations to everyone, people that want to rent this building. We need to upkeep this building, and we need to start thinking that way. We're not going to have COVID funds that it's going to come across, probably, hopefully, never again in my lifetime. So let's really think about who we donate to and why.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, uh, make a motion to decline this.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Gene Davis to decline. I got a second by Jeff. Any discussion? All right, Arthur, roll call.
I was just going to discuss, I guess, with the.
Okay. I offered.
Yeah, I was hitting the button to get moved to the roll call. The, I guess, like when the fire department spoke in regards to that, I mean, it's kind of stuff, like we set the rates, even though I'm in the fire department. I think it maybe not looked great if the town started writing donations back to individual organizations. I mean, to me, I don't know. I guess that would be a question for the town attorney, but I know you said it was legal for us to do, but it almost counteracts what we just set. And then I know for us, the donation that we get from the town, you know, we're grateful for that, but we actually got to rent Town Hall three times this year, so that donation covers maybe, you know, one of them after it's all said and done. So we're paying out of pocket, too, from other funds that we're fundraising or getting to just cover the expense on that. So I know they didn't clarify that, but we've already used it once, and we've got two more that are upcoming.
We need to find out what they actually paid. Because I'd heard.
It was brought up in the last meeting by the treasurer in the April meeting, that it was $1,000.
Yeah, and that's not the right number.
That's why I asked in the work session, it wasn't depicted on the bill sheet as that much. So I don't know if that's something we can take outside the meeting and look at, but.
Judy can answer that.
Yeah, we can do it after. I guess when he came, you know, in the April meeting, he spoke that he wrote a check, but on the bills, it says $575. That's why I asked in the work session.
I think there was a misunderstanding. Judy, you want to step to the podium? No.
I mean, we can figure it out after, because it had already been paid, and they were just waiting on that, I believe was the, like, holding fee, the security deposit. Yeah.
So they paid $575 to rent Town Hall, $300 deposit.
Which.
And $188 for alcohol, and then they got $300 back.
Understood. I'll send that back to them.
Okay. Didn't we say that nonprofit, they're nonprofit, correct?
We are, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So isn't nonprofit able to rent the hall for $575? Is that not what I understand?
Yeah, and they did.
All right, then why, why was he asking last month for the same rate that he had before? Because.
He misunderstood the bill. He misunderstood.
Okay.
We hadn't returned the deposit at that time, and I think he thought that that there was no deposit to be returned. Is that correct? Yes.
Okay.
But he did get his deposit back.
And they didn't know if it was going to roll into the next time that they had to rent it either. That's what they brought up in the last meeting.
All right, we got a motion on the floor to deny this. Anybody else have any other discussion?
I was just going to say, I understand where they're coming from, and what they do is absolutely wonderful. But as Deborah says, and as I look at the tiles falling, the mold, mildew, this is an extremely important building, and it isn't easy for the town to just put out the money. On a side note, Friends of Caroline Library, to which I'm president, rented this hall twice a year for 27 years, until we very kindly were told, we're not doing this anymore, go someplace else. So we never asked for a discount. We never asked for a waiver. When you start setting precedent for one person, you will need to do that. And that's why you guys worked so hard to get to this point. I can't imagine why you would retract and say, let's start doing this all over again. It just, it defeats our purpose.
Not retracting. I'm just looking out for the town and the town interests and what the town people want. And the town people love Tinseltown.
Oh, I think it's fantastic. I was at Tinseltown.
Getting people here.
I think it's great. I just think if we set a precedent by starting to do that.
My main concern when we did that, that we would review if anybody came to request that.
Fine.
Anybody else? Someone call roll call? All right, Arthur? The vote, the, the motion is to deny.
Yeah.
Yes?
I'm in favor.
All right. Arthur, I mean, Randy?
I'd be in favor.
What's that?
I'm in favor.
Okay, in favor, yes. Deborah? Denying? Valerie?
I decline. I'm declining this.
It's a yes if you're declining it.
I haven't listened to it.
That's why, it's yes, yes, yes. The motion is to decline their offer, I mean, the rate.
I'm denying.
Okay, yes. Ms. Gaines?
No.
One no, or?
Yes.
Jeff? Gene? That's six yeses, one no. The motion does not carry, so. I mean, the motion carries, it is denied. All right, last item on the agenda. The new business is to, we need to authorize the town manager to put out advertising for the public hearing for the budget for the June 2nd meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
You had a motion by Arthur, second. And a second by Gene. Any discussions on it? And is the, it's the only budget that is in the
Right.
In our packet?
It's the budget that's in the packet, in the work session, and then the rates, to raise the rates 15% for water.
Right, okay. And we got to do the water one, too. We'll do that one next. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? All right, motion passes. Now we need to have one to publicize the water and sewer rates.
I'll make the motion to.
The motion from Jeff. I got a second.
Second.
Second by Arthur. Any discussion? Now, this is for the 15% increase in sewer, or water.
In water.
In the water. Okay, sewer's staying the same, okay.
Yeah, this is a kind of mandate from.
USDA.
Mandate from.
USDA, yeah. All right, all in favor, say aye? Any oppose? Our motion carries 100%. That's the last item, ladies and gentlemen. Do I have a motion to adjourn? A move by Jeff, second.
Second.
By Arthur. Man, you two have been hitting it out the park today. All in favor, say aye? Mean adjourn.